At this time, we're opening the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. Council, you have before you the agenda for tonight, what are your wishes?
Moment of silence.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's have a moment of silence first, please. Amen. Now, we have before us the agenda for tonight. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Council, you have before you tonight the, uh, regular meeting minutes from April the thirteenth, and closed session meetings of April twenty first, budget work session minutes. Uh, what are your wishes on those?
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. We come to that time in the meeting that, uh, we have comments from attendees who are not otherwise on the, uh, minutes for tonight. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak, please come up at this time. Okay, if not, then we will close the comments. Next item of business under new businesses, item number six, a manager's presentation of a budget message. Uh, Mr. Christian, it's yours. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all know, we began the budget process back in March. Uh, we had budget work sessions on March twenty fourth and April twenty first. Uh, the budget message, along with the recommended budget and draft budget ordinance, was submitted to the city council and the city clerk on April twenty ninth. And the final budget work session was last week on May sixth. Through this collaborative effort, I'm submitting a balanced budget totaling eight million four hundred and twenty-three dollars, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. The recommended budget maintains all existing services and is balanced without any property tax or utility rate increases. Virtually all capital purchases have been eliminated for the second year in a row, following Richmond County's surprise decision to change the sales tax distribution method. The impact of this change was grossly miscalculated and misrepresented to the citizens of Richmond County, and we will continue to advocate for city residents, taxpayers, and customers by any means necessary. Our budget is designed to survive as long as possible until something changes. Following the public hearing tonight, we have met all the North Carolina general statute requirements to adopt the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I would like to personally thank the council for their input in the budget process and the extraordinary staff here at the city, particularly the city finance officer, Jill Dickens, who has worked tirelessly to prepare and assist the recommended budget for council's consideration, and all those involved in the preparation of this recommended budget.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. At this time, we move along to item number seven, is opening a public hearing on fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, is there anyone here that's got any comments tonight on it? Council, you have any comments at this time? Okay, we will close the public hearing at this time. Move along to number, item number eight, which is the adoption of the budget. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Move that we adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to all the city staff that worked really hard and the sacrifices that they've made to make this work.
We have had to cut tremendously, and they've agreed to live with it, and we certainly appreciate that.
They've certainly laid everything aside, so we could do this.
They certainly did.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, thank you. Council, you have before you tonight on item number nine, the fourth quarter budget adjustments. What are your wishes on those?
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Item under general fund revenues, Jill, the second item that exceeds budget amount, I don't understand, how do charges exceed and end up as a revenue?
This is just actually offsetting, um, the item in there. Uh, it's on the second page, credit card fees. Uh, with COVID, our credit card payments increased drastically. Uh, so that's just the revenue we take in for those credit cards.
You mean people pay, that's by credit card?
Yes, we pay a third party for the use of the credit cards. We then recoup it from our customers, so it's a wash. But because the expenditure exceeded it, we just use the revenue line item.
Our credit card.
No.
That kind of gave you heartburn.
No, we don't, we don't do that.
That's the wash from where we take credit cards.
Yes, ma'am.
Glad I asked. It's been two, we called at three in the morning.
Okay, anyone else got any questions regarding the amendments? If not, what are your wishes, counsel?
Move that we adopt, presented.
Second.
Or accept.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, thank you. Counsel, item number ten, uh, we've got before us, budget, uh, grant project ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Fund. And, uh, the amount of that money that we'll be getting is a million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Am I correct on that, Mr. Christian?
That's correct, Mayor.
And what we have done, we had to do a budget for it, and, uh, we've done the budget, and the budget comes out to a million eight hundred and fifty thousand. And that's going to be a help to us. Counsel, what are your wishes on this?
Move that we approve, the adoption.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Christian?
Uh, no, sir, I, I can comment briefly, though. Uh, this is basically setting up a set, a special project fund, which will put any grant funds that we receive from the stimulus in a separate, uh, accounting system that's not in the general or the enterprise funds. So it sets up a special fund, so that, you know, it's going to last for a couple of years, uh, um, so it doesn't get washed with like the annual operating budget. That's the purpose of the ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion to accept, uh.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay. Okay. Also tonight, item number eleven, we have our annual audit contract. Counsel, if you need to look at it, find, if not, what are your wishes? Same contract we do every year, right?
Mr. Christian, you've looked through?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, required every year, uh, by the LGC. You have to have the contract with your audit firm that's renewed annually.
Don't think you'll find anybody better than Ken, he's local.
Motion that we move the audit contract?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may.
About this, um, will our auditors' responsibilities change any as a result of the additional reporting we have to do for these, um, league?
Not.
LGC?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, sometimes audit requirements change based on like how much grant dollars you receive. Um, but that's the only time I'm aware of like different, um, types of reports and things that have to be submitted. Uh, I, I'm assuming you're referring to the unit assistance list and the impact of that.
Right.
I, I don't think that affects us, uh, this year, um, and I'm not aware that it will affect us. In, in terms of the audit.
Right, in terms of his responsibility.
Correct.
Thus increasing the amount of contract, that's what I would add.
Right, right.
Okay, uh, and no other questions there? That answered your questions, Avery?
Yeah.
Okay, item number twelve is appointment to the Hamlet ABC Board. Mr. Steve Mercer's term will expire on June the twelfth of twenty twenty-one. Mr. Mercer would like to remain on the board, but the city also has application on file from Ms. Wendy Massagie requesting appointment to the board. What are your wishes, counsel?
Make a motion, we appoint Steve Mercer again.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Any further comment?
How long has Steve been on the board? He filled the vacancy of someone that left, so he hadn't served the full term yet, okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Also have an application from, uh, Mr. Rick Steen to be placed on the depot board on a recommendation of the depot board. What are your wishes on that, counsel?
Move that we appoint.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay. All right, now before you tonight, counsel, uh, list the tax, current tax releases, what are your wishes on that?
Move that we approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, thank you. Okay, item number fifteen, uh, there has been some discussion required, maybe some questions and such on the animal ordinance, and, uh, we will go in and just have some discussion on that. Uh, Mr. Martin, did you wish to make comments to start on this, what our problem is?
Well, I've had a, I've had a, I've had several conversations. Let me change that to many conversations with one particular person that has a problem with barking dog. Now, this is an ongoing problem and has been ongoing for, well, since Jonathan Blanton was here, since he's here. Prior to that, I don't know how long, it's been going on for a long time. And they finally got the case, first of all, they rarely got anything done, when I say they, I'm talking about the police, that, they've been up there, they've talked to her, they've looked, they've been. Well, they finally charged the person next door with the, our ordinance of, you know, barking dog and this and that. Anyway, it finally got to a court. Well, when it got to a court, after it was dismissed, not dismissed, but after it was continued for about three or four months, because the judge had other obligations or something. Uh, but it finally got into court. Well, when it got into court, the lady went to court, she went to court every time there was a case call. And, uh, anyway, she finally went to court. And the judge dismissed the, the charge of barking dog, our ordinance pertaining to barking dogs, and dismissed it. And his reasoning, uh, or maybe it was the attorney, uh, that was there for the, not the complainant, but the defendant, uh, said that, um, our ordinance was not specific. It was, uh, no, the judge said it was unconstitutional. Now, I wasn't there, I didn't hear, I'm just going by what this lady told me. And said that our ordinance, uh, was, uh, not specific enough because they interpreted our ordinance to mean it must disturb a neighborhood, not just a neighbor or one person. And besides that, they said it was unconstitutional, which I don't believe, but anyway. So, I've talked to the city manager about things involving the barking dog, and asked him to talk with Mr. Morpheus, our city attorney, to see about making this ordinance more specific. In my opinion, it doesn't matter whether the dog is barking disturbs one neighbor or the, or three or four neighbors. I don't see what difference that would make. If it disturbs one, that's enough. Uh, especially when you got it on tape and got it, you know, documented, but yet it didn't matter. Uh, this lady has a card par, a card group, they can't play cards at her house in the summer or spring, they like to go out on the porch. Can't go out the porch, soon as they go out on the porch, the dog starts barking and continuously barks until, I guess they go in or something, I don't know, but anyway. So, my position is, I wanted the city attorney to make this ordinance that we've got more specific so that it is constitutional, which I believe it is, but, but also I wanted to make it more specific that it don't have to include a whole neighborhood. If it includes one pa, one neighbor, to me, that should be sufficient. And then, talking about the animals, I guess we, he wants me to talk about the, uh, the ordinance that we have pertaining to other animals like hogs, pigs, horses, goats. Well, we don't have, we don't have an ordinance that is specific for horses, goats, pigs. For your information, I don't know whether everybody knows or not, I'm sure some of you do, a pig is not a hog. A pig don't become a hog till he gets eighty-five to a hundred pounds, then it's a hog. I'm referring to pot bellies, pot-bellied pigs. Uh, people have pigs, but we had a person that had a pot-bellied pig, and one of the council members was complaining about it. But, because he was under the impression that our ordinance said hogs, you can't have hogs in the city limits. Well, a hog is not a pig, and a pig is not a hog. So our ordinance doesn't refer, or is not specific enough to mean a pig. So, far as I'm concerned, the guy that had the, the, uh, pot-bellied pig was legal, because our ordinance didn't say he couldn't have a hog or a pig, it just said that our ordinance is specific and says you can't have a hog. And a pig ain't a hog, but anyway. And, uh, as far as horses goes, you can have a horse in the city limits, you can have ten. Our only ordinance says that if you have a horse, you must keep it stable clean. Well, I, a guy called me and asked me, could he have a horse? His daughter wanted a horse at their house in the city limits, and I told him, no. He said, well, you better check the ordinance. He said, I, I went and read the ordinance, and it says, all I got to do is keep the, the stable clean, and I can have a horse. Well, I really didn't believe it, because I thought you couldn't have a horse. I come down here and checked, and you can have a horse in the city limits, you can have goats in the city limits, you can have other animals. That's why we're here tonight, to, to make that specifically clear, what you can have and can't have. And, uh, so, that's really what I.
What about, counsel, what about chickens?
No, you can't have chickens. It, we're specific in the ordinance says you can't have fowl or chickens, and fowl. So we're okay on the chickens. Now, I know there probably chickens in the city limits, I mean, we, we've had several people that have to get rid of them, I'm sure. But, no, we're, we're okay on the chickens, you can't have chickens. Or fowl, meaning birds, I mean, like quail and stuff, I don't know, I've never had any.
There's a house on Howland Avenue with a full-blown, there's a house on Howland Avenue with a full-blown stable by it.
Well, he's legal.
It doesn't have horses in it?
Well, he's still legal.
Used to.
Well, he's legal, unless we have an ordinance that prohibits it.
I know it.
And I think.
It's not just like a backyard van, it's a stable.
Yeah.
Wash racks, stalls, the whole bit.
Well, as of right now, he's legal, and if we, if we changed the ordinance to make it prohibitive, he's still legal. Because I guess we'd have to grandfather that in. I'm, I'm talking about, I think we need to make it specific for what you can have and can't have in the city limits of Hamlet, that's all.
Mr. Morpheus, can you look into that for us?
I'll, I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Martin, um, let me give you all a couple of thoughts about that, and I, I did speak with city manager about this, um, late last week or yesterday. The general statutes provide the city broad latitude for what you allow within the city limits or not. You can ban all livestock, you can allow some livestock and not others. As Mr. Martin's pointed out, there are some animals like pot-bellied pigs that people keep as pets, um, which you all could choose to ban or allow. Uh, there are communities that have chosen to allow, um, chickens. We represent one town that decided they wanted to allow a species of fainting goat. So, I, I guess I say that all by way of, I need feedback about what counsel wants in terms of animals allowed within the, uh, within the jurisdiction. As far as the barking dog goes, I'm, I'm happy to take a look at our ordinance and see if we can't tighten that up, Mr. Martin.
I don't know if anybody's ever heard a goat squeal or make their sound, but I have, and I can tell you now, I wouldn't want that next to me. It, they, 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 it sounds like a crying baby or something. But I don't, I mean, that's just my opinion as far as what it sounds like. So I think we ought, we ought to make some, make some changes and prohibit some of this stuff.
Well, what if somebody lived in the city limits that had, um, a fairly significant piece of property? It wasn't just like a next-door neighbor type situation, maybe had five or six acres in the city limits.
Well, what's good for one is good for all. We couldn't, we couldn't just say, well, you got more land than you got, so you can have and you can't. I say, should, it should fit all.
And, uh, not to contradict you, Mr. Martin, but you all, again, have some latitude. You as a board could say.
Oh, yeah, I realize that.
At all, but I have seen ordinances that allow it based on land. If you have a certain amount, you can keep chickens, you can keep a horse, things like that. Um, other communities say none whatsoever, no, no matter the size of your tract.
Well, I just say what's good for one is good for all in city limits.
Well, you got to look at two, what about the sanitation, about it draws flies and maggots and snakes and all kind of critters to come to it.
Garbage cans do that.
They do very well do that, but I'm, I'm aware of what, uh, Mr. Martin is talking about, I've been called about it too. And, uh, and this next one, that one of the neighbors keeps the dog in the house. The other one's got it outside. One barks, one doesn't like a barking dog. And, uh, who can, who can we say to, what we can do with our dogs, or what we can do on our property? But if it's barking, uh, if it's excessive barking, you know, I don't, uh, I don't have a, I don't have a, I don't have a solution. But we, they both have own dogs, that's my point about it, because I asked one, I said, ask, do you own the dog? Yes, I do, but I keep my dog inside, and I walk my dog for exercise, and blah, 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 I said, that's good. But, uh, they, uh, and the fellow that owns the dog that's barking and being accused all the time, he said, had he known the, known that it was not, it's going to be this way, he'd have never bought the house. He thought he was close enough, and it'd be large enough, large, he could yard, he could use the, he could have his, have his dog, so, yeah. It's up to the council to decide, and I hope Mr. Morpheus can come up with something. But the, the, the ordinance just plainly stays about a barking dog. It's a nuisance to the neighborhood. To me, that's pretty plain.
Yeah, but that's a neighborhood.
That's a neighborhood.
Everybody's got a complaint.
But I understand too.
It barks, but it doesn't bother me up to the point where I'm calling the police or something, but.
Well, that's the reason the house was sold by the former owner, is because of the continuous plaints of, they had a dog also. So, it's just a no, it's an ongoing war.
I understand. This, this lady's threatening to leave Hamlet, move up to Virginia with her daughter and, or, and go to, or go to Wilmington or something, she's threatened, I, I don't know.
We all have options, so it's just, it's an ongoing war.
But you shouldn't have to move from your home because of a dog.
No.
I don't see where our ordinance says anything about, unless, I see what I see here, and it says it should be unlawful for any dog owner to have or to keep or have within the city a dog that habitually or repeatedly barks in a manner, or to an extent that is a public nuisance.
Well, to, to be a public nuisance, it's got to take more than one person. That's the problem.
What if it's only two people?
Well, that's all, there's only two houses on, on that, well, on that side of the street, there's two others on the other side. But say it's, it don't bother them, apparently, it's on the back, are they on the back, and, you know, it's sort of like, but that's the problem. It's not, the ordinance is not specific enough when it says a nuisance. Becomes a nuisance, you got to have more than one person to say it's a nuisance.
A lot of what that is, is the judge's opinion that was there at the, you could have another judge that would, would convict somebody on that.
Well, yeah, well, one thing to ask her, this lady, do you have any witnesses? Well, she, she could have got ten people up there if she'd have known it, but she said, no, I don't have any witness, nobody told me to bring a witness. But she could bring several of her card club people up there that, that would say, you know, that they were, and she could bring a man up there that says he came to sleep up there at night because of the barking dog, he may not come back up here from Wilmington. I mean, he's, you know, eighty-some years old and, and, uh.
Mr. Morpheus, did you have a comment?
I was just going to suggest that if it's the direction of counsel, I can get with the police chief and find out what exactly the judge said for why the, the matter was dismissed, and see if there are things we can do in our ordinance to address that for the future.
Well, I think we need to be more specific on it. According to the judge, says uncon, I don't know that the judge said that, I'm just repeating what she said. He said, she said, it's unconstitutional, or maybe that was the lawyer. I don't know, but that's what she told me. I wasn't there, so I didn't hear that.
I think that route is probably to get directly to the whole person that was there, the police officer, whoever.
Well, see, the police officer was there with the evidence that she had given the police officer. And they wouldn't accept that because they said, did you take this video? She said, no. I, it was given to me by the complainant. Can't use it. So.
Okay, then Mr. Morpheus is going to look into that for us and see what he can work out, and we'll hear something next month.
And would counsel like me to provide also revisions regarding keeping of livestock in town, or are we okay with current?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I'll do that.
Also, along this same line, so, you've got to be realistic about it, most of the time, it's going to get thrown out in court. They're not going to prosecute, not just that, but any other thing with the animals. Um, is the city able to impose like civil penalties and civil fines for barking dogs, uh, aggressive dogs that break out of the pen or whatever and attack people and, and other dogs as well? Because if, 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 that could be an avenue for us, if that would be acceptable.
So the city can levy civil penalties for violation of most, if not all, the ordinances and the code of ordinances, including the animal ordinances. We were talking about animals breaking out and threatening people, now you're in dangerous dog, uh, statutes, and there's actually whole set of rules about that, and, you know, if a dog is found to be dangerous, then it can be essentially barred from the city or ordered destroyed. So, there are other remedies, including possibly civil penalties, if you're talking about a dangerous dog, which is of course.
I mean, there's been cases, and I'm, I'm not wholesale, not in the justice system at all by no means, but there's been situations that, uh, dogs have gotten out and attacked other animals, and the cases has been dismissed. I mean, when you got eight, nine hundred cases on the docket every week, they're not gonna, they're going to prosecute the, you know, the more severe penalties, but if you hit somebody in the pocketbook, they may think twice before they allow those dogs to constantly get out and bark and cause, you know, nuisances and things like that.
Well, there's another aspect of our animal ordinance, which is the tethering portion of it, and, um, it is not effectively enforced.
Mm-hmm.
The dog next door to me has been tethered since last July. He has not been off his leash in ten months.
Wow.
And, um,
Jesus.
It's just, we need some kind of penalties.
Yeah. And something that we could control would, in my opinion, help us. I mean, even if it meant turning off utilities and things until they paid it. I mean, put the ball in our court rather than someone else throwing it out.
No sense in sending it to a courthouse, that's obvious.
Yeah.
If we're going to have it, then we have to put the teeth in it.
Yeah. Could you check on? Could you check on that and maybe see what, uh, is it like maximum fines? And, um, maybe come up with a, a scale of, you know, first offense, second offense, third offense, um, things of that nature, because at the end of the day, just like the chief said, I mean, until you've lived around an animal that's, uh, uh, aggressive, abusive, uh, to other animals, um, or even just that constant barking and noise and stuff, nobody wants to, to live like that. I mean, that's why people move to the city. They move to the city because, because they don't want a horse barn beside their own, or they don't want livestock running around.
Chicken houses and hog houses and stuff. Well, this lady that I'm referring to, her friend comes up from Wilmington, he's eighty-some years old. He was walking his daughter's dog because he was keeping the dog, the dog was on the leash, his little teeny dog, and this same dog ran out in the street and attacked this dog and, uh, injured the dog pretty ser- severely. And, uh, that's, that's the dog we're talking about. And, uh, now he's on a chain or in a fence or something back there. I don't know how he got out, that's not my business, but that did occur. And, uh, and the dog was on a leash, the guy was walking his little dog, it was his daughter's dog, and he was keeping it while she went to Pennsylvania or somewhere.
Couple of years ago, we had talked about, um, hiring an animal control officer, but I guess we can all watch that go by the wayside because we don't have the money to do it right now.
Well, the dog pound's not taking any dogs either, I understand. They can't even pick them up, and they do with them.
The sad part is, it, it, it ultimately, every bit of what we talked about comes down to individual responsibility and people not stepping up and being responsible. No, it's, 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 it's the owner, and, and unfortunately, we are living in a town where people don't take pride in anything, they don't, you know, and, and until we put some teeth in it with our fines, it's not gonna change.
And the, the gentleman of this household, he works at night. And, uh, so, the dog's out there, and I don't know what his wife does, I don't know what she's working or what. But, uh, he works at night and the dog's outside.
Makes you wonder why they don't hear it, doesn't it?
Huh?
Makes you wonder why they don't hear it.
Well, the prob- obviously, they hear, but it's their dog. Well, I don't know.
The dog's barking, what is mine or somebody's?
Yeah, but, yeah, but it, well, it may be, but it may not disturb them, I don't know. I've never asked, but it bothers the neighbor. And if I had a dog and my neighbor was complaining, I would do something with the dog. I'd either make sure, I put him in my house, or I'd give him away or something.
They bark for a reason, so, I'm, you know, he might be able to do something about it.
I wonder about that too, about barking for a reason.
Well, of course, a dog's gonna bark, everybody knows that.
That's right.
But not continuously, over and over and over and over, to where you can record it all night long and give it to the police and they can't even use it as evidence. But, anyway.
Okay, moving along. Item number sixteen, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. Um, a few items here, we're finalizing submission to USDA for the wastewater expansion project. I hope that next pump, next month I'm able to report to you, uh, that they've either given us some feedback or given us some indication as far as funding. Um, city hall is open, uh, masks are required, waiting areas are socially distant and only one person is allowed for service at a time. Uh, the depot, museum and visitor center are also open, and volunteers have started opening on the weekends also. Um, they're doing like some health screening and temperature checks and trying to be responsible with that. And the senior center has also begun to open, uh, limited events for the month of May, and the event calendar is on our website, so, we're trying to ease into, um, uh, uh, I guess the post-COVID era, and, um, we're, we're trying to be responsible with that and keep moving in, in one direction, even if it's slowly. Food Truck Friday is this Friday at the depot, eleven to seven, I think they'll have two food trucks and a couple craft vendors that'll come out, if you're around town, take a walk down to the depot and, and enjoy yourself. Um, also, I'm, I'm happy to announce that there will be, uh, free COVID vaccines available Monday at the Memorial Gym parking lot. Uh, they'll be doing that from two to five PM, the health department's doing that. Um, there's no appointment needed, no cost, um, but anyone, if you're just riding by or you've been wanting to get a vaccine, I think you, you have some options. Um, so, we'll be doing that, and that is on next Monday, so. That concludes my report, happy to take any questions.
Anybody got any questions for him? If not, we'll move along to comments to council, Ms. Covington.
Um, I guess the thing that impressed me most of all was, uh, I took a ride out Boyd Lake Road last Friday, and I saw a park full of people with spectators and kids playing ball, and they looked like they were having a ball. So, I am glad we're back in the recreation area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sellers?
Other than the fact that I appreciate what the town staff has done, uh, working on the budget, keeping us going, they do a great job. And I just think that, uh, I'd like to see more participation from the community, for the residents to come to these meetings and express their concerns. And if they do, they can solve problems without having to go to a judge about the barking dog or whatever it is. I understand they have complaints and I understand they have to live, but, uh, I'd like to see them come to the council and report it first. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I'll just say that I'm loving seeing the citizens here. Um, I loved it before COVID, of course, after Co- COVID hit, we couldn't have come in, and we've been kind of by ourselves for about a year or so, but it's great, and I'm loving seeing the citizens come in, and that's what we're here for, and we're here to serve you guys and to advocate for you. And to our city employees, can't thank you enough, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Well, I just concur with, with what's already been said. Uh, other than that, I don't have any further.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McQueen?
Yes, so I, um, been following up with what Councilwoman Covington was talking about, about the, the ball teams going on, I actually went out there last night and watched one of the games, and it's probably the most fun I've had in a long time. And those kids out there just having a ball, the pam- I mean, very seldom do we get to make decisions to where everybody's happy, and I think that was one of them. Um, that was a real positive for the community, and, and I'm glad we, we all done that, so that was great. Um, special thanks to all the staff for all the hard work that went on, um, in creating this very lean budget. And also, I would like to thank every member of the council and the mayor, because during this time is always extra meetings for us, um, and we coordinated our, our time and, you know, times we were off of work and all, and, um, to come meet several other times in addition to the normal meetings, and we had some good positive, uh, feedback and things like that. And last but not least, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Morpheus and his firm. Um, they have done an outstanding job over the past, well, how long, eight years, seven, eight years? Um, but specifically, over the past twenty-four months. Um, we've tasked y'all with, uh, handling some very, very serious issues for the city, the taxpayers and everyone. Um, so, just thank you for that. Um, the knowledge that y'all's firm brings is like unheard of to be a town this size and have, uh, a firm such as y'all's, uh, and, and, and the extensive knowledge of everyone at that firm. If you're not here, somebody comes, um, if you're not in a specialty of yours, somebody's, I mean, we've had real good service with that, and we're just looking forward to hopefully favorable rulings on our part on some of the litigation that has been filed, and on some of the litigation that is going to be filed. And I would like to make sure we tell you thank you for that hard work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first off, I'd like, as some of the others have said, you know, city council's up here, but without the staff, without the staff being dedicated to what they do here in the city of Hamlet, whether it's the garbage men, the policemen, the firemen, uh, the ladies in the office, they just, they get in their work, they don't complain, and they do an excellent job. So, we do really appreciate them. Uh, I had the same thing about the ball teams, I've had any number of nice compliments over the last couple of weeks. People saying, man, I'm glad you all started the ball teams up again, so, uh, that, that's a wonderful thing. I guess over the last several weeks, everybody's been hearing about the trash on the side of the roadways, and I would just encourage people to put a bag or something in your car and take it home, and don't throw it out on the side of the road. Uh, there's a lot of different organizations that are picking up trash right now, and, uh, if you ever had an opportunity to ride down Airport Road, then clean it up one day and the next day they have to come back and clean it up again, it's dis- it's disheartening. Uh, my last item is, this week is Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and, uh, it's a time to honor all our law enforcement officers. We've had some bad times in law enforcement, we've had just a very, very minor number of people who have caused situations, that have created problems for our vast majority of our law enforcement people. So, if you get an opportunity and you see them this week, thank these guys for what they really do, they, you, you just don't see them down in the trenches doing the hard work. And, uh, so, please think about our law enforcement officers this week. And, uh, that's all I have on that. And with that said, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A three, attorney-client privilege.
Before we do that, do, did, did anyone miss the, the, does anybody want to make any comments? Did everybody understand he asked that earlier? I just want to make sure that the folks that are here.
Yeah, I agree with that counsel.
Understood that, that the opportunity to speak, if anybody was wanting to speak, I wouldn't have a problem with anybody.
Any of the attendees, any attendees like to step up to the podium and?
I mean, I know it's out of the order, but-
I would love to say something.
Come on, come right on here.
You know, I've been living in Richmond County, my name is Jean Douglas.
Start talking again, you're too far.
I have been-
Need your name.
My name is Jean Douglas, I live at four twelve Pine Street, Hamlet, I'm the site manager over the head and start sitting here in Richmond County. And this is my first time coming to, to the meeting, I truly enjoyed it, I appreciate everything that you're doing for the citizens, but my concern is the old abandoned houses in the community. That's my biggest concern, on Pine Street, we have a lot of old abandoned houses, I don't know who had the church cleaned up across from Aberdeen Street, and I thank you, because in some of these old abandoned homes, you, I go to work in the morning, you see people, I don't know if they're trying to make it as to like a homeless place or not, but I'm just concerned about the old abandoned homes on Pine Street.
Thank you. We, we have a problem on Pine Street.
Thank you.
We did have some discussion at the last meeting regarding it, but, uh, so we're working on it. Okay, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, thank you.